Okay.
All right, call this meeting order. All rise for the swift reply.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry's statement of publication?
Yes, take notice that this special meeting being held on June 1st, 2017 has been advertised in post records with open public meetings act, chapter two, three, one, public law, nineteen seventy five.
Roopal.
Counsel persons Buchanan.
Here.
Grillo.
Here.
Kilpatrick. Lambo.
Here.
Melendez. Mova.
Here.
Okay, so we're gonna start the discussion. I know we had a court hearing today, so Larry, if you can just brief us all on what's going on before hearing?
I will, I will. Thank you, Dan. We head court this morning, ten o'clock, in front of Judge Natale. The attendees were, Mr. Frankel was there, Mr. Leon Covalo was there, on behalf of the town, Fair Share Housing, Kaplan Organization, and Betsy McKenzie, the special master. And we advised the judge that we adopted, at least at first, on first reading, at the May twenty second meeting, the ordinances for compliance with Fair Share. We advised him that we're scheduled to go back to counsel for second reading and for adoption on June twenty sixth. And what he did is he agreed to a hearing on July sixth. So on July sixth, we have to basically either have the ordinances adopted, or he will fashion a remedy to deal with the settlement agreement. The Kaplan Organization and Fair Share wanted him to basically adopt the ordinances now, retroactively, subject to you guys doing it on the twenty sixth. And of course, we argued against that, and we said, listen, you've got to give the municipality time to do this voluntarily, if they can do it. One of the other arguments of the other side was that they wanted a special hearing officer appointed in anticipation of the projects going before the planning board. And we also objected to that, because we, my argument at least, was, listen, your honor, and he agreed with it, the municipal land use law decides how quickly a planning board application gets heard, and what the rules are with respect to a planning board application. And, you know, I don't think the court should be usurping that at this particular time, and he agreed on that. The other side also made a request, a continued request for counsel fees, which he would not grant at this particular time, but he could be inclined to do so after July sixth, depending on what the council does. All right, so, as I see it at this point, if you don't adopt the ordinances on June twenty sixth.
June twenty sixth.
June twenty sixth, and when we go back to court on July sixth, the judge will likely adopt the ordinances for you. He could revoke our builder's immunity. I don't think he'll do that, but there's a possibility that that could happen. And I don't know if he's going to grant counsel fees, all right, but I just don't know what, you know, what his fix is on that. So that's where it's at. Now, there was discussion, in fact, Ms. McKenzie brought it up first, and of course, we had to confirm it, that, you know, the town was interested, and, you know, she stated that she met with you guys, I guess, in early May, and that it was a productive meeting, and that the municipality is looking into some creative issues with respect to the municipal owned properties, all right, which is a good thing, I believe, all right, you know, and that can take a variety of different forms, and also is concerned about particularly Camelot Two. And McKenzie stated that it was her opinion that if you're going to discuss anything with Kaplan, you better do it quickly, all right? Now, I did, and I think I indicated to you guys at the last council meeting, or maybe I did it in special, you know, in closed session, that I was willing to talk to Kaplan. And I did, I reached out to Kaplan's attorney. And at first, they said, well, we don't want to talk until you guys adopt the ordinances at first reading. So I called him up, I guess, on May twenty third, the day after you adopted it at first reading, and they said, well, we don't want to talk to you unless you got something concrete from me. So that's where we are with Kaplan. All right, so, and Dan, am I pretty accurate in what I've indicated?
Very.
All right, so, that's where we're at, guys. You know, I'll answer any questions you might have, but that's pretty much in a nutshell what happened today.
Going back with the, in my opinion, illegal approvals for Town Lake, when the planning board was supposed to make those approvals with affordable housing.
Right.
Was that discussed with Kaplan or anything?
Wasn't discussed with Kaplan. I did discuss it with McKenzie. One thing I mentioned to Mike today, Mike Dupont can't make, couldn't make it tonight, he's got an issue with, like, he's taking his mother out for dinner, so I said I can reiterate everything that I needed to, you know, that he would have said tonight anyway. But one thing I did mention to Mike was that if you wanted me to explore the possibility of seeing if that could be reopened, I certainly would. I mean, I could look at the file, all right? This all happened prior to me becoming planning board attorney, a number of years ago, so I don't have any records or files on this, but I could look at it and see if there's a possibility of doing something on that.
When does this date back to, these units that we're building today? How far back is this space?
Talking about the Town Lake?
Well, no, I'm talking about just in general for COA, and I know there's different stages, and we're in stage three.
We are, well, actually, no, we're in stage, I think it's the final stage. We were COA certified for round one, round two, and even round three. So now, we're not even dealing with any of the rounds, because don't forget, COA's been disbanded. So now it's up to the courts to manage the affordable housing, all right? But again, I don't know the date on when Town Lake was approved. John, you may have more information on that.
I want to say around oh five, oh six.
Yeah, but then it was, then it was an appeal.
They had for years, right?
Yeah, I think it was Mr. Holbein.
Well, I think what happened with Town Lake, all right, now, you know what, I think of recent vintage, what happened is they got an approval. And then what they tried to do is they tried to convert it under the conversion bill from age restricted to non-age restricted. And that was, I guess, denied. The case went to the appellate division. It was sent back to the planning board for rehearing at some point, and that's where, you know, that's the final thing that happened. Now, I don't know when the decision was made to not have any affordable inclusionary obligation on that project. That's something I'd have to look into for you guys.
And John, I know you've been in the planning board a long time, do you know how many of the complexes that have been built that should have had COA housing or affordable housing?
I don't think there were, I haven't seen the resolution in a while either, and I, and I think it was in, might have been twenty. It wasn't a large, large number.
I think it was, I think Chase Partners may have been the only one. Don't forget, you can only require it for the larger projects. So you probably had a number of smaller subdivisions which wouldn't have even triggered any affordable. But the Chase Partners project.
It's twenty-two, so that's.
Yeah, so that was one where affordable was, you know, wasn't possible.
They were, isn't that?
Yeah, yeah.
And Lemire? Where's that?
Lemire, Lemire was a suit, as far as I understand, and the sections never had, that was a total suit that obviously Kaplan wanted.
Correct. Wouldn't you have had to build affordable in that, since he's building it? Is it automatic, wasn't it automatic suicide?
No, there wasn't.
There aren't any affordable, no?
There, we didn't have, probably at that time, we didn't have the implementation ordinance. Well, we had, we had, but they were very weak and difficult. We'd now change those, given the circumstances that have occurred.
Are they still getting approvals for that?
What?
Are they still getting approvals for?
I think they're, I think they got their last approval. That's the section they're doing, that you see from six.
Section six, I believe they were in.
It's already being built.
It's in the process.
And there was no affordable in there? Because, I mean, that was just, how long ago was that?
There was no, that goes, well, that goes as far, again, I'm not sure of the exact dates, but that goes from the eighties up to when section six got approved. That was more than four or five years ago now.
Now, when they go before the planning board, is it the planning board's obligation to make sure that the affordable housing aspects in a plan, or is it, for, since when phase six came up before the planning board, was it their responsibility to say, yes, you could, these are the units you're gonna build, this percentage needs to be affordable?
No, there wasn't any requirement at that time, but.
But that was just recent, that was just within the last few years, phase six, right?
No, that was, that goes back again. Phase six is a while ago. I think it's at least, at least four or five years.
Right, but that was still under COA, right? Four or five years ago. So they would've been an obligation.
Yeah, but we didn't have the ordinances in place that we'd have to, that we now have introduced. So anybody who comes in now with a large, the mom and pops are exempt, they don't, they don't have to do anything. But if you come in with a large project, you have to either provide fifteen percent set aside for your, if it's rental, with twenty, twenty percent if it's a for sale market rate.
Anyone else have any questions?
Is there an opportunity to look at retroactive?
Well, I'd have to, I'd have to get the file for Town Lake. That might be the only, I mean, I can tell you, if a project was approved twenty years ago, no, you know, that's well out of time, I'm sure. And my inclination is that even Town Lake may be out of time, but I could look into that.
I agree with Councilman Buchanan. I think that if there was something that was not executed properly, we might as well, since we're in this review period, doesn't hurt to take a look.
Yeah.
It may not be a significant number of units, maybe it's only twenty, like John said, but if that's twenty that don't have to be built somewhere else, so.
On top of that, the market bite.
Right.
So I think we should definitely pursue that, and you don't think there's any other sites, though, that would comply?
No, you know, I just don't think you've had large residential developments approved. But, you know, certainly that one was, but, I mean, if you'd like me, Councilman Buchanan, to get that file from the planning boards.
Yes, please.
I'll do it, I'll take a look at it, I'll report back, I'll report back to you guys, I'll do a memo. And, you know, if there's a possibility of, A, litigation against Kaplan on that project, then maybe that's something we pursue, or maybe there's some leverage with respect to that.
It could be a bargaining chip.
Yeah.
Be a bargaining chip, but you're saying we have to approve this at the twenty-sixth meeting.
Well, if you don't.
It's never gonna be, getting him to build more affordable housing isn't gonna help this right now.
Well, the only.
Once we approve these things, he's gonna be in front of that planning board, and he's gonna be trying to build this stuff as quickly as possible.
Mm-hmm, right.
So it doesn't, we can spend a lot of money on litigation, and all we'll have is what?
Well.
We're trying to change this. That ain't gonna change this, what they're saying.
Well, I don't think the settlement, and I, as you know, I've said it throughout, I don't think you're gonna be able to modify the settlement agreement. The only way you'll be able to modify the settlement agreement is if you get Kaplan to agree to either build somewhere else in town, other than the sites that have been selected by Kaplan, and that would involve land swaps, or, you know, you know, that gets a little complicated, but, I mean, that's one possibility.
Or decreases density. That's what I mean by bargaining chip.
No, I agree. I mean, if you can, if you can throw the threat of, listen, you got away with something on Town Lake that you shouldn't have gotten away with, and, right, build less density on Camelot One and Camelot Two.
Exactly.
All right, you know, and give us credit.
And we can do this before we approve all of these zoning changes.
I don't, well, I think, well, no, listen.
You know.
We could try.
We could try, we could try.
Yeah, okay.
We could try.
Because I'm not gonna vote for this.
No, I know, I know. I mean, I think you've made that clear, so.
You know, I don't, I don't understand why we, if, I have no problem with the overall affordable housing numbers. I think that is more than fair. I don't think, I don't understand why, you know, the River Road development wasn't considered, the developer that was in there, his contract with that property is gone, why we didn't consider making that all affordable housing, and then we could have eliminated a lot of these things. Instead of twenty-four, if we had a hundred and sixty in there, we, we wouldn't have needed.
You're talking about the River Road redevelopment project? That was part of the plan.
It's part of the plan for some developer to build a hundred and sixty units there with twenty-four affordable units.
Right.
No developer has a contract on that. We own the property outright. If we, if Sarah had been consulted on this, because the first thing Sarah said was, well, why don't we just develop it and have all affordable housing? That's a hundred and sixty out of these numbers here. That's a hell of a lot.
So what does Sarah put forth? We've been talking about this since January. They've said if they've been consulted, well, they've been informed now. What's the plan?
They would, they would like to build on this property and have it, and all low income.
Have they developed an RFP to bring in a developer to build?
They wanted us to give them the okay to do it. I understand that we have two years to come up with the financing and everything. This is something that the housing authority and Sarah seriously would like to do. But why do it?
Two years ago, we had the housing authority before us.
That's right, trying to do something, and they were supposed to go and consult with COA, with the planning board, and that never came. And that's what they wanted to do. They went before the planning board. We'd like to be part of the COA plan, nothing.
On this site, or on the other type, on Ernst &amp; Road?
On the other one.
Yeah, Ernst &amp; Road, yeah.
Which also had significant public pushback from the neighborhood. Let's not, let's not say that it was gonna be built.
I realize that.
Different Ernst &amp; Road site.
Yeah, different Ernst &amp; Road site. Oh, I apologize, thank you.
Behind the mini wall.
Yeah, it's up by the mini wall.
Yeah, just understand one thing.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
Because everyone seems to be losing sight of the fact that Kaplan, as an intervenor, brought these properties in. It's not as if anyone went to say, oh, by the way, Kaplan, would you like to build on these properties? They intervened in the lawsuit the day after we filed, you know, the day after we sought declaratory relief. So.
Yeah, but if we didn't need these numbers, then how can he be an intervenor if we don't need his numbers?
He doesn't have, no, he doesn't have to need, we don't have to need his numbers. He wanted to participate in the affordable housing settlement, and as an intervenor, he had the legal right to do so. So.
But we negotiated this crap.
Well, we negotiate, we negotiated it based upon the size of the projects, the extent of the concept plans that they submitted, which were reviewed by the special master, by Ms. McKenzie and by the court.
Because we needed to come up with a certain amount of numbers.
Correct.
If we didn't need to come up with those numbers, because we developed the River Road all as affordable housing, we wouldn't have needed these numbers.
No, you still would have been locked in, because they would have sought the maximum, they would have sought the maximum density on their site based upon the fact that they intervened on these two projects. So.
Our original number was thirteen sixty from Fair Share Housing Center.
Yeah.
And we got about a forty percent discount with our credits that we carried from prior rounds and the bonus situation.
John, you mentioned once about that River Road project, about possibly doing veterans housing there.
Yeah, that's why I handed out that, I had a file, and this is one that was done in Raritan Borough, which I'm familiar with. And I believe there were seventy-three units of, some two hundred units that were set aside for veterans housing. We have a circumstance here where we don't have a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twelve. Originally on those charts, we see a hundred and eleven referred to, which now, because of rounding off on the COA, we have to go up to a hundred and twelve, because we have to make up one unit. So we have, in fact, on the second Excel sheet on the bottom, total units to be built is a hundred and twelve. We can't just leave that as a hundred and twelve. We have to show that we're ready to do that. If Sarah's willing, we've talked about this a little bit, I think we can maybe put a number there. The problem is, how do you finance something like this? The way you get no market rate units is one hundred percent municipal affordable projects, all right? So we could do it, but a number of towns have been collecting fees for a long time, so they have in magnitude of five hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, you know, some have a little more, some have less. But you can use some of that money to offset the costs, you know, and then get involved with either a nonprofit, like a church. I was involved with one in Highland Park as a planning witness for, I believe it was about twelve units for veterans in an abandoned or vacated church that was for sale, but nobody was buying it. And they renovated that. There's something called low interest tax credits. I believe the time to get those have passed for this year, but you can apply next year again. So if we can find a way, if we could get a number, and the higher the number goes, if you wanted to build, let's say, a hundred and fifty veterans in a high-rise on River Road, in that we have a couple of islands within the wetlands, which they were gonna have eighty units on one and eighty units on the other.
Right.
If we could find some way to do that, the higher number, the higher the cost. So then, you know, the higher the cost for the borough, if you don't have a sponsor or a partner, or, you know, a nonprofit partner that you could utilize, like a church. I've checked on that when we were going through this with the planning board. I couldn't find any churches that would, that would even talk to me almost, you know, that, and there are churches, there's the Methodist Church in central Jersey, they do this a lot, but, and I worked with one, for the one in Highland Park, and they, they didn't have much to say about doing it with us. They're concentrating in Highland Park where their headquarters is. And they've done two projects, where they got one project, one unit, which was a, some kind of house they had, and then the other one where they had eleven or twelve units, I believe it was, that they got, which were for veterans of different, different classes, you know, in terms of, it could be homeless. What we would want here, I think, is family units, which would stretch one bedroom, two bedroom, maybe some three bedrooms, not too many, maybe no three bedrooms, whereby, you know, a family unit, a veteran could go in there. We don't want, you know, like, you know, just beds. And we could get, for whatever number we would come up with that we could afford, maybe, if that's something the council wants to go down, you would get a, they wouldn't be any market need, market use.
But.
So you would get, no, you would get a one for one. So if you had something like sixty, which would be this, like I said, with seventy-three units or seventy-five units, something that's, that would be seventy-five credits then, that would come off. We have another project, but it's inclusionary on Route, not, on Route thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
That was forty-four townhouses with twenty-two affordables.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve.
The new sketch showed twenty-two.
Twelve.
No, it's, it's twelve.
Yes, twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's about ten to, I thought it was ten to twelve affordable units.
Affordable, eighty-five total, was it?
What does this give you, a two for one?
So.
No one gives you two for one. It's twenty percent.
So let me, so let me ask you a question. On River Road, with your experience, what you have looked at, okay, you're saying you could build two twin buildings, your opinion, you can build two.
Well, that's what it was supposed to be.
Well, Mary, hold on, I just want to understand what you can build there, because it's different of what's there versus what you can build. So if it says a hundred and sixty, you could build two twin eighty units each?
You could.
Is that what you're, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, you could, but we all, so we would have to build enough, though, because we have a.
No, 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 just bear with me. Units. Can you build eighty units as two buildings, eighty plus eighty?
Yeah, that's what's on there, that's what's on the concept plan now.
Okay, just. So you can build a hundred and sixty units. So if I understand what you're saying is, if you took the several housing land situation of one twelve, and you added twenty-four of the River Road, you come up with one thirty-six, okay? If you added, which is just a large concept here, of Cross Avenue, which you're getting twenty-four affordables, that would bring you up to one sixty, which is what you're saying, eighty plus eighty, one to one. Therefore, that would eliminate.
Cross Avenue site.
Cross Avenue site, that would put all of these units on River Road.
Only the municipal units.
Municipal units, including several housing, and except for the affordable accessory apartments along Washington, which kind of staying, because there are only ten, you would have completed a plan to add to the two Kaplan sites, and that would be, and the luxury point, which no one's questioning, and the Morgan Chase, Morgan Bluff, which is no one's questioning. So you would put, you'd be done. You'd be putting a hundred and sixty units, but then you have to, the borough has to finance that.
Somehow.
Somehow.
And we have to share one hundred percent of the cost for infrastructure, as opposed to if a developer was coming in.
Correct.
So it's an important question of, this is, making raw land at the side of the river.
It's cost, dollars, right, right, right.
What is the real cost of developing that, because we've got a hundred percent of the burden, as opposed to, you know, a private site like Cross. Cross Avenue would be developed, and we would have a very small percentage of the, the cost of infrastructure.
And a hundred percent of the soft costs, which are unknown, could mean X amount, it could mean X plus exponential amount, because we don't know what those costs are, because we don't know the buildability of the land, we don't know the, any of the bringing utilities.
Where are we with environmentals on that site? Did Sarah ever get that from a developer? I mean, we've done phase ones on it, under the road. Do we know wetland delineations? Do we know?
Yeah, that was all done. I don't know the exact, I wish Michael was here. I know that's all done.
It was probably done many years ago.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, phase one's only gonna be good for a couple of years. I mean, we don't know where, you know, the water table is. And I'm not objecting to it. I think it's, in theory, a good idea, but it's not as easy as just saying let's build two towers. I mean, this is a site that has nothing on it that we would be.
Also can't do this in twenty-five days.
What was that?
You can't do this in twenty-five days.
No.
Well, first of all, you're making the assumption that Cross Avenue is a debt project. Now, it may very well be.
I'm making an assumption. I'm just saying is that if.
Well, they're not even an intervenor, so.
No, they're not, but.
So we're not obligated.
What's that?
We're not obligated.
No, we're still, no, well, we're obligated under the settlement agreement, all right? But I know that there's been discussion that maybe they don't have control of that property any longer, at least, that's.
No, no, I think they probably, I think they probably still have control.
Right.
It's my guess. You probably have to pay more money to keep the control. But the problem is, if we kick him out of our settlement.
Right.
Okay, the developer is basing his economic return on the higher density.
Right.
So if we go back to what it's really zoned for, which is, I believe, R-ten.
Right.
You're getting four units per acre, not like, I don't, twelve or fifteen units per acre, or something like that. So any developer would not pay the same price.
Right.
To the seller, therefore, that, that option would probably expire, and that site would just be laying out there.
Yeah, I mean, there's a potential for that, so. I guess there's gotta be some guidance as to how you would like us to approach it.
If he's not an intervener.
Right. He's in the plan, though. He's in, he's part of the settlement agreement.
But he's not an intervener.
Well, he didn't file an intervention as a party, that's correct.
So we have no obligation to him.
We have an obligation under the settlement agreement to comply with it, but I'm sure if we contacted PRC and said, listen, we're taking you out of our settlement agreement, go, you know, do what you feel you is necessary, either he's going to then file as an intervener, or he's not. And chances are, if he doesn't have control of that property, he's not. Not gonna waste his time. You know, but that's a discussion that has to be had with, you know, with K. Now, as to the municipal owned properties, let me, I have to add one other thing, too.
Let me ask a question about that. So if the Cross Avenue site is taken out, we fulfill our obligation for COA.
Right.
Cross Avenue is still sitting there, it's vacant land. The developer can come in and build as of right, and there's nothing that we have to do, as long as it passes muster of the zoning and planning boards. So it goes back to a kind of open market site, and it's probably.
Yeah, but you're also still going to request for a site that large, you're gonna request affordable housing. I mean, you should, yeah.
But not necessarily at this number.
Well, no, but you should be at twenty percent, whatever, whatever.
Whatever they build.
Whatever they, whatever their total build out is.
Well, so.
Yeah. There's your problem there, if you go back to four units per acre, and there's twenty-one acres, in theory, you're looking at eighty-five units, in theory.
As opposed to one sixty?
Right, so you're dividing that in half.
Yeah, so it's beneficial to the borough, actually, to.
But what I was about to say is that we also have to go back to court.
So there's a density question, yes.
One other thing, I neglected to mention this when you asked me what happened today. The judge also set down a final compliance hearing date in September, and he's basically giving us time to. And he's basically giving us time to deal, as I see it, with these municipal-owned properties, and to try to come up with our final plan as to that. So I think what Dan's suggesting is that if we wanna deal with these hundred and sixty units at the River Road site, it's, it's possible to do that, but we'd have, we'd have to have that in play by September.
We'd have, but we would have to. But we will have already approved the changes to the zoning, so that, you know, all of this stuff is done.
Well, you're not changing, you're not zoning, you're not rezoning Cross Avenue, you're Cross Avenue.
No, but, I mean, we're, we're-
Yeah, listen, your, 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 your obstacle is apparently Kaplan, all right? And guess what I'm telling you, is Kaplan's not going away. Kaplan is not going away. The only way that Kaplan is go, is going to go away is if you make it financially lucrative for him to build somewhere else in town. All right, that's just, that's the bottom line. I, I've said it.
What are the possibilities of that?
Of that happening? Not likely, not likely.
There's, there's, it's a-
There'd be, there's a couple possibilities.
What can we offer?
Well, either what can we offer him, or what does he have now, okay? So one possibility is the, you call it Camelot.
Camelot, you, you, side one is across from the, what, the-
Kaplan Site One, across from the chimney, okay?
Yes.
Right now, there's a, there is a tentative of putting in a hundred and seventy-three units.
Right.
With twenty-six affordable. Okay, how can you make it more lucrative for him? Give him more units. I'm not saying we do it, I'm just saying that's an alternative.
Swap for the other.
No, that's, I mean, you give him more units, and therefore, you're gonna, same problems you're gonna have, you're getting more density, you know, you guys know where the location is, but that's a possibility.
So on the last site plan that we had, when we met, uh, two weeks ago, whatever it was, he had proposed a hundred and ten units on what is currently that prime-zoned park, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Four and a half acres, whatever.
Yeah, a hundred and ten units.
Yeah.
As it stands, the zoning does not allow residential, correct?
Right.
No matter what, so require a rezone.
Mm-hmm.
So we do have leverage there.
Right.
Um, he's gotta put a hundred and ten units somewhere, right, to, financially. Um, maybe that Kaplan One site, we can work out an increase in density.
All right, well, well, before we do that though, and, um, I know we have members of the public here, I don't wanna discuss litigation strategy, because now we're getting into litigation strategy.
Okay.
All right, but what I would, would like to do, with your permission, is if you want myself and Mr. Buchanan to sit, uh, Mr. Frankel, looking at Dan.
Two Dan's.
Dan, 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 okay, if you want Dan Frankel. If you want myself and Dan to sit down with Kaplan, to discuss some options with respect to Cap- Kaplan One and Kaplan Two, I think we should do that, but it's gotta be done quickly.
We'll meet soon.
All right, so that's a consensus?
Now, now, I'm gonna ask you two, I, I gotta ask this question, and I don't know whether it's an open session question, but I mean, we're having this meeting, we have to be able to discuss everything. Mako just won his suit.
Right.
He's gonna be able to build residential. Well, I mean, this is part of it, though.
Then go in a closed.
Well, first of all, I don't, I, I can't really answer the Mako litigation issue, because I wasn't involved in it, all right?
Okay, but what I'm saying is that they will be able to build residential there.
They will be able to build whatever the zoning is in place prior to them involved in this litigation.
Two hundred and six, which was residential.
Right, right.
Two hundred and six units. Now, will they be obligated to make twenty percent of that, of the two hundred and six? They, they can't come back and say, oh, if you want us to do twenty percent of two hundred and six, you've gotta increase our density.
That's up to the town, yeah, that would be up to the town, if there was a planning board application submitted. Um, now, that may be, you know, that may be a situation where you don't, you know.
They're not obligated.
They are, there is a state mandate to provide affordable housing, and there should be a set aside, you know, and that's-
And how long has that mandate been?
Uh, listen, I'll give you my experience. My experience in representing another planning board in this county for the last twenty years is that every residential large subdivision that's ever been built has had an affordable component.
So the state mandate has been telling planning boards to put this in.
Correct.
But ours continually did not. They just ignored it. They just did what they wanted to do. They're an autonomous board that, this council has no say over, and they just did it, and now we're sitting here with all, with all the crap. Now, I'll just get back to Councilwoman Novak's question. I read documents that Mr. Robinson provided us, and there were two-for-ones. When you actually wouldn't get one unit, uh, you get two credits for it. What, where does that take them?
You could get two-for-one, but I think we have reached, there's a maximum. Uh, the, the, uh, for rentals, for instance, uh, if, if we weren't at our rental, uh, horizon, which is twenty-five percent of what we've made, I think we've made our, I'd have to check, but I'm pretty sure, one ninety-six is our rental goal, and we've made that goal already, so we can't go over that number. To get you, to, if it was, if our number was one ninety, uh, you know, it was one fifty to do something with this, uh, what we were just talking about, we would get bonuses for that one hundred percent, uh, affordable, uh, municipal, uh, housing. And if we didn't reach the, the threshold of one ninety-six, we could get bonuses, secondary bonuses. So that would be two-for-one then. But I think we've, we've reached our number.
And it's only on rentals?
It's, that's on, yeah, on, well, that's, this would be, I was, uh, would be rentals, family rental units. Because you're, you're not gonna have, you know, people who don't have affordability, uh, you know, buying a mortgage. So they would have to be rentals. But we get, we get the one-for-one, uh, because we're not doing any, uh, market rate with this, because it's one hundred percent affordable by the borough. That's the difference. So that's better than, and we can, if we manipulate the numbers, we can, we can eliminate some of the market rate. We have-
Pat, Sarah just met.
Mm-hmm.
Right in. Um, I, I think the idea of doing two towers over at River Road makes sense, but if Sarah wants to drive the ship, they need to put their money where their mouth is. Um, I think since there's four of us here, and we can vote to advance it, I think we should empower Sarah to develop some type of strategy, uh, for that site, because they've been sitting here for a number of months while we're debating this. I like the idea. We know there's significant hurdles, um, any land use planner will tell you that, but why sit on our hands? Let them do it.
I, I agree with you, and it's, it's a way, it's a big way to proceed.
Because we do have till September. We have till September to make it, and there's-
To, to fine-tune this plan.
Right.
Fine, yeah, right, to fine-tune the municipal idea.
Fine-tune the plan, but guess what, guys, we're still gonna have to, in, on the twenty-sixth, change all of this zoning.
Yeah.
And it don't matter what we do with River Road then. We, we can make it all affordable housing.
As far as the Kaplan sites?
Well, what, we'll be changing the zoning on the Cross Avenue site also. You know? Anything that we're changing the zoning on, a business to residential, a prime to residential, doubling to almost tripling residential current zones, once we do that, it's done, and we can build a whole hundred and sixty there, and it could be really beautiful, and it ain't gonna change the rest of this stuff, once we change the zoning.
We would still have to change that Cross Ave zoning?
Well, I think on Cross Ave, I mean-
Have we started proceedings on that, on River Road?
I think if you want me to also inquire, I think what I could do on Cross Ave is I could talk to Mackenzie on that one, and say, listen, there's a possibility of Sarah doing a hundred and sixty units on River Road, which would take all of our municipal obligation and put it on that site, and would take that Cross Avenue obligation and put it on that site. And since Cross Avenue has not intervened, I'm just gonna tell, I'm just gonna tell the ju- uh, you know, based on, I'm gonna tell PRC, you know, you know, do one of those, and, you know, see what, see what they decide, yeah. It's not on the record.
Now, I mean, this, this ten apartments along Washington Road. Uh, if, uh, out there on thirty-five, they get approved and they're putting twelve, would that eliminate that?
What site specifically? Were they up at twelve on River Road?
Tickle Lounge.
Tickle Lounge, behind the building, I think there's eight, I think there's eight.
Just, just for the record, I wanna make sure.
Market rate forty-four plus twelve, affordable.
That's what they've already come before. I mean, we-
The ten units, the ten units as accessory apartments-
May never happen.
Have not been questioned by anybody i- in the plan, by the taskmaster, by the judge. So those are down the line, that's people who might renovate, who may, so no one has even questioned those ten units.
I think you wanna keep them in the plan.
Yeah, why would you wanna swap that out?
All right, to keep them in the plan.
What I'm saying, if, if, if they get approved and they're gonna have twelve, can we then, you know, just take that out of this?
Well, can't we take it out of the municipal?
Right. I, I don't think, I don't think necessarily the tension-
Do ten less, what?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Take it out of the municipal? Because we have to build municipal. These, the accessory apartments may or may not get built, but they're on somebody else's dime.
Yeah.
So if they're gonna build X amount of units on that Club Deck, well, we're lower on responsibility.
Right, right.
Which goes to my point that I brought up at the last council meeting, which is I think we should, and the special master agrees, look at Route thirty-five, um, have the planning board, uh, commission some type of study with the borough planner to determine, um, if any type of rezoning would be appropriate to develop more mixed-use, commercial on the first floor, residential above.
And I believe that Ms. Mackenzie said that was a great idea.
So we, we would need to take action on that.
Well, we keep, we keep going back to additional stuff.
Well, that's for the, what she said, and I agree, is for the next round, that there is a next round. You know, and right now, given what's happened in the past, there is gonna be a next round.
And the, and the adapt to reams is, is ridiculous.
But, you know, next round will be much different than this round.
And, and I, I will tell you this, I, I believe the next governor, if it's a Democrat, is going to put the kibosh on everything that we've all done here. He's gonna, he's gonna re, he's gonna reinstate COA. He's gonna take it out of the court system. It, it's inevitable. I think, uh-
And what does that mean?
What that means is that, what that means is that he's going, that COA will be re-instituted, and COA will then be responsible for administering the affordable housing, all right? Uh, and it's quite-
You're gonna take it out of the court system.
Correct, and it's quite likely that every, what every municipality has agonized over, and by the way, it's not just Saraval, I mean, there are, every municipality has agonized over this, uh, you know, since twenty-fifteen. Um, could all be for naught, all right? But, you know, it's politics, and who knows how long that's gonna take, all right, but-
Uh, again, we, we change these ordinances on June twenty-sixth, and I think before the end of, before any election that's gonna, or somebody being seated on January first, we're gonna, we're gonna have plans in.
Well, you may have plans in, and then there's, there's a time period by which a planning-
Then try to get the zoning changed.
Well, no, but there's a time period by which a planning board has to deem an application complete. There's a time period by which they have to consider it. And then there's also the, the site issues that have to be dealt with on every site plan application, all right? So, but I, I think for now, uh, if, if you would, I think there are two things I think you need me to do hastily. One of them is to sit down with Kaplan, and I think Mr. Buchanan, uh, Mr. Frankel and I should do that. And secondly, uh, yeah, I don't know, 'cause I keep looking at him, and I'm looking, I know they're both there. And the second thing is, I think I should get, I'll make immediate request of the planning board secretary to get the Town Lake file, to review that, all right? And to determine whether or not there's the possibility of reopening that issue about affordable on that site, which to me could be used as leverage in negotiations with Kaplan.
Makes sense.
All right?
And I, I think we should have something from Sarah that presents some sort of abstract as to what they would do. Because we will probably need that sooner or later to show a judge, yeah. Um, so only one of us sits on Sarah, um, but perhaps Councilman Lambo could advance that if we're all in agreement. But I think just to discuss it makes no sense.
Do you want me to?
All right. Is that, is that the consensus of what you guys want me to do?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, do we, what do we have to do for Sarah? Sarah, get to authorize Sarah to move forward and, and come and play.
We just have to get the consensus. I don't think it has to be brought up by the entire council at a regular meeting.
Should we have the consensus from the council?
This is a special meeting that gives authorization. We have authorization to-
And to work with the housing authority?
Yep.
Okay, anyone object?
No.
Okay.
Get to work with Sarah, the housing authority.
So Dan, can you, uh, Terry, Dan, either one, contact Sarah, let them know?
They'll have to have a special meeting, but, right? Because they want time, because they're not gonna meet till the end of June.
They have a meeting coming up, okay?
No, I think, you just had yours.
The end of May?
Was the next.
Well, when is the June meeting?
For what, Sarah?
Yeah, the next July. I don't know.
Um, you have meetings at the end of the month.
It's the last Thursday of the month, right? But sometimes June, they switch it around.
Third Wednesday, third, Thursday, they've been on Thursdays.
Yeah, it's Thursday, the last Thursday.
It's okay, I mean, that's something that we can worry about down the road.
They should actually.
We, we know that, get in touch with them, and see if, talk to McDaniels, see if they can have a special meeting on it. Maybe a joint meeting with housing, when housing meets. Let's just look at it real quick. Anyone else have any questions? If not, I'm gonna look out to the public. Public?
Public has some questions or comments. Thank you very much.
State senator?
Jim Robinson, living where elsewhere, I'm meeting on the chair.
You want to sit, Jim?
Oh, that'd be great, thank you. Um, I attended a court hearing again today, and Betsy McKenzie, the special master, did say that this is the week where negotiations ought to take place, so I'm glad you're doing that. Um, I've had a number of conversations with the chairman of the housing authority and Sarah, and I think they are all on board, so I think they're gonna be very receptive to, to your suggestion if they wanna come up with some, uh, creative ways to do this. I would just mention that, I think it was asked, I don't know if it was done publicly in a meeting or privately, um, but about Town Lake and the obligation, the builder offered to do affordable housing, and the planning board, for whatever reason, said no, so, um-
We'd have to check the minutes.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, if that makes it easier or more difficult to go back to the builder at this point in time. Uh, but he was aware of that, and he did offer. Why the planning board said no, I, I don't recall. As a matter of fact, I think I asked that in the last meeting, and Jay, um, Jay gave the timeframe when that happened, two thousand and eleven, I think, if, if I recall. You talked about Mr. Kay and Ernston Road, um, on one of Mr. Kay's projects on Ernston Road, I don't know if it was the one that Bob Cornell built, or, um, which is, Harbor Club, is that?
Yeah.
It is Harbor Club.
Harbor Club.
Harbor Club?
Yeah, it's now a condos.
He was given a density bonus back then, because at the time, that was one of the most dense communities in the town. He was given a density bonus. In exchange for that, he was supposed to do certain things, which he did not accomplish. When I was chairman of the planning board, we introduced an ordinance to effectuate that, to make sure that he did not get out of that obligation. Um, when we did the master plan that I was involved with when I was chairman, and that was many, many years ago, we had that memorialized in the master plan, so that future planning boards and future governing bodies could not forget it. Now, I raised that issue with the mayor a number of times, um, and he told me that he had asked Judy Varone, who gave the opinion that that was done a long time ago, so it was no longer enforceable. Um, most of our laws and regulations were done a lo- detention mandates, very long time ago, still enforceable. Um, so I'm gonna suggest that you take a look at that. Um, I don't know if the planning board would have those records, Jake Cornell would certainly have those records. The last, the, um, master plan that, I think they were called Moskowitz Higher and Rule, or, what were they called back then? Just Higher and, Higher and Rule and-
Moskowitz Higher and Rule.
Were they Moskowitz back then? They, when I brought them in, they were Moskowitz Higher and Rule. Um, but the master plan that they did would have that memorialized.
Jim, are you suggesting that there was an affordable component that should have been-
I don't remember if it was exactly affordable, but there was some component, it might have been senior, I'm not sure. That was a long time ago.
We would have, you know, if it had, well, first of all, if it had been built as a, you know, with an affordable component, we may have, I don't know if we received credit on prior rounds, I don't know how many years ago it was, but-
I, I don't think so, but I'm gonna suggest, and because for reasons that were not clear to me then, but are very clear to me now, the mayor dismissed that, and said, that's old, that's unenforceable.
Can you check into that?
I think we should, I think we should take a look at it.
Alright.
That's Harbor Club?
You talked, I think it was Harbor Club, you talked about leverage with Mr. Kaplan, there, there might be some leverage here. Councilwoman Novak mentioned the maggot suit, that's settled. I think that can be discussed in open session now.
I would only, you know what, I would only defer to the fact that I didn't handle litigation, I know, I miss a DuPont's not here this evening, and I know.
Okay, and we're not gonna talk about the particulars of that.
We got a copy as a settlement at the last meeting.
I think you got a copy of the court order, but I don't know if there was, it may have been an opinion.
Yeah, there's a sixty-page opinion that was too cheap to pay for, but I, I did get the, you know.
I haven't seen the opinion yet, but.
I am accepting contributions, though. I understand it was a very interesting order. But anyway, I think he does have to figure into the equation, obviously, before that were settled, was settled, I think that the town had more leverage. I did speak to him after the last council meeting. I talked about the borough reaching out, I was pretty certain that they would not, so I did reach out to him. Even though I do not represent him, I do not have any financial arrangement with him, or never have. And, and those of you who have long memories will maybe recall that I have been subject of his wrath, that he threatened to sue me and the planning board I chaired a couple times. He wasn't successful because we managed to do things legally, so he didn't, he didn't even initiate those suits, because we made sure that we did things appropriately. And I called him about this, and he was not gloating over the fact that he won. And I would recommend that if you were trying to find a settlement, you reach out to all parties that could be involved. And see, if, well, for one thing, if he, if he's going to build, he certainly should have that fifteen or twenty percent at a minimum, at a minimum, do that.
Twenty percent is building resales, right?
But maybe he'll do something more. You know, that piece is a sandpit, it doesn't have the environmental constraints, it might have some other things that, that we can't see or we don't know about, but certainly it doesn't have the, the active rail line, or it doesn't have all the trees and everything else, or the wetlands that some of the other sites have. So I, I would ask that you consider him a stakeholder in this, inasmuch as, if you recall, he wanted to be an intervenor. And for whatever reason, probably because of that suit, God bless you, probably because of that suit, the town said no. So I would suggest that you reach out to them. Let me ask this question. If folks are going to be allowed to build as a result of this order, or, or as a result of the agreement, rather, the off-site and off-track improvements that the planning board might normally require, are they still in place? So for instance, the, the Main Street bypass might be funded by some of these things that?
Uh, well, it depends to what extent, I mean.
Sure, there has to be that rational, is Rational Nexus still a test?
You got that Dunkin' Donuts case, which I think is, that's still in place, though.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright, so, I think you ought to take a look at that with respect to Kaplan, if we do have these two hundred and eleven units, and you wanna bifurcate his project. So that he does perhaps what enters on to Main Street, near the extension and near what might soon be the bypass, but not what enters on to Ernston Road. And I, I think are the numbers the same, is, is it a hundred, what was it gonna go on North Ernston, a hundred and ten?
It's a hundred and ten on the, the little sliver.
Hundred and ten to thirty, a hundred and sixty.
And a hundred and. Hundred and sixty on the other one.
Okay, so if you, if you take, if you take that hundred and ten from north, is that what, a hundred and ten from North Ernston, and perhaps he's involved somehow and is allowed to do that at River Road, maybe that alleviates the problem you would have at North Ernston with entering and exiting at that very dangerous.
I, I think this, if we can have the dialogue with Kaplan, yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into strategy.
Yeah, but I think that's something, we'll discuss.
But if something you wanna, you wanna take a look at.
Just to be clear, you're suggesting, you're suggesting a P three between Sarah, Housing Authority, and Kaplan to alleviate the one hundred and ten units.
Okay, the other thing I would say.
Is that a yes or a no?
Pardon me?
Is that a yes or a no?
If, if you could move this to there, and, and do it in a way that doesn't, that he's made whole, or relatively whole, and doesn't have objections, I, I think it's a good thing for the town, and it's a good thing for the neighborhood.
Are you suggesting a private partnership between the, the borough and Sarah and the private development?
If, that's one of the things that might accomplish it, I mean, there, there are probably a number of things that.
I just wanna make sure I'm near you correctly, okay?
That, that, and I'm not talking about this specific arrangement, but certainly that's one of the ways it could be done, and, and public-private partnerships, and public-private nonprofit partnerships have worked to address these things in a lot of places, and it's something that I don't think we have heretofore done, it's something that we ought to take a look at. With respect to the ordinance that was introduced, I did mention at the meeting, and I, I would reiterate now that the bulk standards for what, what is this called, Camelot one, whatever, Camelot two, are less than they are in other areas. Setbacks, for instance, I don't recall if open space is less, but I would, I would respectfully ask to get take a look at that. And see if, if there can be a uniform standard, and it be the greater standard. I think setback might have been twenty-five feet here rather than fifty. If it were fifty, if this needs to be done, and I'm suggesting all these other things that I've talked about any number of meetings, and I was very happy to hear John talk about the, the veterans' housing, that's one of the things that was, that I suggested, there are a whole myriad of things, and so I, I think that is a, a step in the right direction. If you are gonna do something on River Road, I would suggest that rather than picking something that sounds great, we look for something that gives us the, the greatest bonus. I don't, I don't know.
We have to do rentals, first of all.
Yeah.
I'll double-check it, but I'm pretty sure we're at our rental horizon. So that we cannot take advantage of the.
I think we maxed out on that.
Might be maxed out, okay.
So we, we will be able to do that, but I, I will double-check.
And the, the other thing is, it was mentioned, but I think maybe passed by, because we're talking about a lot of things today. A lot of towns have fee ordinances that do provide for this fund, and those aren't just on residential development, that's on commercial and industrial development as well.
Commercial, I agree. That's something you need to look at.
That's something that, that you ought to look at, probably you should have looked at twenty years ago.
Correct, you're right.
And you'd have a nice fund there, so I would suggest that, that you look into that. I thank you for having the special workshop to talk about this.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Next, just to say your name.
Kevin Murphy.
One, might I wait a minute of one second?
Please.
We do have a, we do have a development fee ordinance within those four ordinances. That we're voting on, there is a development fee ordinance.
Right.
Oh, it's in the four?
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's what, that's what, that's what Coa.
So just to be clear, that it does exist, and that's what we will be voting on.
I thought he was talking about industrial.
Uh, for commercial. Yeah, commercial, industrial ought to be included, and in a lot of.
Mr. Murphy, you have an equation for me, 'cause if you don't, I'm gonna head out, okay?
No, it's not a legal question.
Okay, fine, 'cause I do have to go to Old Bridge. I have a zoning work meeting at seven thirty, so. But anyway, before Mr. Murphy speaks, I will take care of everything you've instructed me to do, and I will talk to Mr. Buchanan tomorrow, we, we will do that.
Thank you. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
I mean, I don't seem to know about all these things that you guys have here. Big question I have is, is there any way to quantify how much this is gonna cost the town? Or is it too early to even think that? 'Cause I hear we have to build homes, and I read that the judge told South Brunswick that they had to build twelve hundred, in addition to what they wanted to. The judge said they had to build twelve hundred more units, and that this town ends up having to pay for a lot of this stuff. So is there any way at this point that we know how many we're gonna have to build, and how much it's gonna cost us, or even close?
John, how many units, how many units are we gonna have to build, or, or need to be built, based on these four orders?
My last calculate, my last calculation, excluding luxury points, which is not exactly before me, but I, it, it is on our page. But my numbers come out to, it's like eleven, twelve, thirteen hundred, something in that magnitude. You know, it's not, somebody said, I think at one point, it's two thousand units, maybe that was with luxury point, but let's see what happens with luxury.
Over to the town if you can.
Well, but, now, if we get this number down.
This is not what we have to build, this is just what's gonna be built here. Our big expenses are gonna be after the fact, with infrastructure and schools and stuff like that.
But we're gonna, as a town, have to build things, because we can't get developers in, and we can't induce them.
What do you, what do you think by things? What are things?
But we're gonna have to put up apartment complexes, or where the town has to build it.
You're talking about the properties, the municipal properties?
Yes, I'm just, the idea is, it's, 'cause we're gonna have to pay for it.
So within this discussion, what we had tonight was those two towers that we could potentially.
Okay, something like that that's on.
But now that would then generate revenue for the borough, right?
Yeah, but you'd have to build it first and pay for it and all that stuff.
Like any other development.
Okay.
Where we will incur expense, like any other, any project, is in sewers, roads, schools.
No.
Place.
I, I think the reality is that Sayerville's a very desirable place to live, our population has been growing over the last decade significantly. It's a good place to live, it's affordable, it's convenient. I think the best way to look at this is we're seeing an influx of, we're gonna see an influx of people, because we're mandated to build these units, remember, this is not all on, on day one.
Yeah.
This is a ten-year period, and, well, it'll be eight now, yes, because we're two years into this.
Two and five.
Uh, it was a ten-year, but then again, as Mr. Sacks said, next governor could come in, change the rules, courts could change.
Oh, sure.
So.
Makes sense.
Yes, it's not doomsday, I mean, these people are gonna eventually move to Sayerville, you have to look at it that way, over the next eight to ten years, but at least this gives us an opportunity to have a more firm plan.
Okay, then let me ask the question this way, that's even easier. What are the chances that this Coa, we're just, I'm just gonna use the term Coa for everything, are we gonna affect our property taxes?
Is it gonna affect the taxes?
Yes.
Sure.
Higher.
What are the chances?
Yeah, well, I'm just.
Definitely.
Definitely, but now, how does that work with the old Governor Christie two percent? Property taxes handle more than two percent.
That will be a problem.
Well, it's not only municipal tax, I mean, if, if we have to build a school, that's the board's tax.
Well, sixty-seven percent of your taxes is school taxes.
Yeah, no, I see, I, I noticed that.
And that will be probably where the most new expenses.
Well, that's where, and when I saw that, I said, okay, we have a two percent, if we have to pay more money, there's a problem there, something's gonna have to be cut.
But also remember that you're gonna have tax revenue coming in, you're gonna, so these vacant parcels are sitting there and generating very relative to the tax revenue.
Oh, yeah. But right now, we can't know how much this is gonna cost. Or even how much our bu, our taxes may or may not be affected, it's too early in the game.
No.
Correct.
Right.
But we're not gonna get slammed with having to build some ungodly amount of whatever that's gonna.
Sure we can, we don't pass our ordinances.
Well, exactly, from the twenty, twenty-sixty, I'm passing ordinances, where the judge will get upset.
No, not upset.
Not upset.
Oh, he'll just.
He'll take action.
Oh, yeah, no, I saw that, so, okay, I was just wondering, 'cause I was reading, you know, I watch it on TV, and I was reading the actual beginning from two thousand fifteen, that hundred twenty-eight page thing that a lawyer had to have written. I was looking through it, and then just trying to figure out how much this is gonna cost Sayerville, you know? Just, you know, and obviously, if it's gonna cost us, and then I said, well, we can only look two percent, well, something's gonna get cut, probably, unless you guys can figure out a way around all this stuff, I mean, you know all this better than how we can do it. I was just wondering if we have an idea of how many, how much this potentially costs, but it sounds like you can't, because you're not sure exactly where it's gonna be built, or what it's gonna cost us, except for we know we're gonna have infrastructure issues after, so. Okay, I can accept that now at this point, that's fine.
So if you don't have a better answer, but it's one of them.
No, that's, that's fine, as long as, guys, that's where we're at, that's where we're at.
It's the world of infrastructure spending.
Well, it's, half of the time, it's not the infrastructure, it's the, uh, law you court, afterwards.
I would. Yes, ma'am.
It's the service.
It's where's Mahoney, to our place, are we? I'm here just as a regular person, because this is all new to me, and I'm beginning to learn. What I'm gathering, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is because a planning board or several in Sayerville didn't in, insist that they follow Coa rules, we're in a mess.
Yes.
Yes.
That's poor, that's poor.
That is.
For every citizen in this town, that is poor, and somebody should answer for it.
And at the last meeting you were at, I asked our attorney, my DuPont, to look into how many times, and now Larry also is gonna look at specifics, but I, I know Lemire.
Well, I'm.
I was there fifteen, I, I did too, I lived there many years ago, um.
It's disgusting, I don't know whether we're for it, I'm sorry.
There was over two, about twelve, eighteen hundred, two thousand units over there?
It's disgusting.
Eighteen seventy-three.
Eighteen hundred units, so twenty percent, three hundred and sixty units.
And have one builder, and it seems to me, and I'm being negative, so I'm, I'm really an optimistic person. Can control the town.
Now, if someone helped us.
One builder. Yeah, he'll help, yeah, I'm sure. I'm really cynical on that, how one builder can have so much control in a town. I don't need an answer, I mean, I can only imagine the answers.
Let me, let me just reiterate for the public and on the record, the planning board, as was discussed, did not require it on several different applications. We're looking at it further to see how many, this council, no council before us had any appointing authority for planning board. There's only, only the position of the mayor can appoint the planning board.
Well, I'm sorry to say, you do my job.
So this, this council is now stuck with this problem.
We have to progress plan, but we had nothing to do with it.
But the council did vote to approve those projects that were built without the four buildings, correct? After they got through the planning board?
But isn't it the planning board to look outside of the town, and the people of the town, who, who elects people?
No. Well, yeah. Yes. Yes, and go over a plan for the town.
I mean, I live off of North Thurston, and I don't know if it was last night or two nights ago, when the accident was in Washington, and they knocked down the hall.
Yeah, I know.
That is what I see happening every day, if that plan, Camelot two, is built, North Ernston and Main Street. That traffic from one end to the other.
It's just one long way to drop.
Is gonna be there, not only that.
And then they were trying to get out on Main Street, and couldn't, because Main Street was backed up at the south.
Who, how many people? They were, it was awful.
All the way to the south, yeah.
Awful, who's gonna wanna live by the, the trees? They go by there morning and at night, I hear them. People are gonna wanna live right next to the, pay good money, and live next to the railroad? Unless there's somebody like me, who grew up with the railroad, my father, not a lot of people wanna do that today, today. I, I, so I'm sorry, I, at this point, I'm really not a happy person, and you're saying people are gonna come to Sayerville? Don't count on it. Don't count on it. Don't count on it.
I don't know. Demographic, one second.
I, I don't, I, you have a, a, a note in the spokesman today, or whatever they call, my, with the, with Brunswick, the suburban.
Suburban.
About the graduation rate in the several schools, it's not, it's not a complimentary article. And, you know, so it's not just your building that you're, have to be concerned about, you know, that's not a complimentary issue, and it's not gonna go away. It's not gonna go away. My family's been in education a long time, and an article like that's gonna take its toll, in my opinion. But I just don't know, this has been poor planning, or somebody's gotta answer, somebody should answer why they're in this mess. Uh, it's a terrible mess.
Absolutely, very.
To ignore for all these years.
Fortunately, the mayor is not here.
Yes, it's his board, he's a sitting member of the board.
Want me to call him?
I didn't know until today he wasn't.
Good question.
I wanna, I'm sorry, once I get started, I'll sit down.
To me, this is the most important thing.
Hold on one second. Um, you need to state your name again, for the record.
Okay, Kevin Murphy, it's all in court, you mentioned something about the planning board coming to the council. And that was gonna be my question, so the planning board says, yep, we agree you can build that thing, that development, sorry. Then they, they have to come before you guys?
No, no.
Nope.
Is there any way that you, that, is there any way the council can institute a law, or something that makes them?
No. No.
They're governed by law already.
I should, I should have clarified my statement, I was asking about these specific large projects, 'cause they certainly predate me, and I only, a council in Canada, Novak, have been around a long time, I, I was just curious as to the case.
No, I know. No, I thought the same thing, if they're on the run, you gotta get somebody over them, but if those laws didn't say, then, okay, that's life.
There's one, look, yeah, there's one that's governing the planning board. Whole book, whole book of us, big book, pretty book, big book, that, that governs it.
So then they can do whatever they want, so, we, well, I'm not saying, but you, you, can you request the planning board to provide the council with any information, so that you know what they're doing?
Sure.
Well, we get planning board minutes.
Yeah, give us the minutes, they recorded videos.
The minutes, but it's.
More than that.
But again, most of it's after the fact, that anything like this would have been discussed in closed session, and as council people, we don't even get those minutes, we are not permitted.
And there is a council member on the planning board, and there is.
Yes, and there is a board of council members.
Remember, this goes back to the late nineteen nineties, this issue.
Yeah, oh, I know, I, I know, I realize that.
So.
Well, it should be two, the mayor and one council.
Yeah, the mayor and one councilperson, so.
Mayor has a designate.
Well, that's fine, I understand, that's my question.
Just say it.
So I can only imagine how many council people of the years have been on the planning board, probably many.
Yes, many. Anyone else from the public, if not, any other motion?
I think the public portion would be close.
I'll second that.
All in favor, opposed?
Go to a John.
Anybody else have any other comments or votes? Okay, there's a motion.
I think it'd be.
I'll second it.
All in favor, opposed? Thank you everyone for coming, thank you for your.
Thank you everyone for coming, thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Thank you members of the council, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I see, I don't do, I think.
They put it in the agenda, I don't know if you guys have viewed it right now.
Oh, okay.
So I knew it was a date.
Because I'm thinking the same thing.
I should know that.
Oh, where I. Because it was in the agenda thing, I knew, of course, I knew it looked there, but.